I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for again being here at 7:30 in the morning. Let's start with the minutes from last meeting. I was not at that meeting, so I would, as far as content, I think I only found one grammar mistake, but that's okay. Content wise, I would appreciate if somebody who was here could speak to that.
I'm waiting for we approved the January 27 minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes passed.
Yay!
Okay. Chairman's report and other trustees' report. I'd just like to say thank you to Liz for stepping in and taking over for me while I was gone. She always, as always, does a wonderful job. I sometimes wonder why you're not sitting here instead of me. But thank you again, I really do appreciate that. I also missed the open house, which I understand was a wonderful success again, and thank you to all of the trustees who attended open house and helped to show our support to the community there. I just wanted to make a comment on, you know, community support and involvement within the community. And this is something I'm going to bring up a little bit later in the meeting, bringing the three boards together for a joint meeting. But I had the wonderful opportunity last week with my daughter and my daughter-in-law and my daughter-in-law's mom, we went and learned how to make dumplings with the Chinese club. And it was something that I had purchased at Delicious Destinations. And it just really, while I was there and met so many people from the community that I had not met before, as small of a town as this is, and as often as we say, "We know everybody." We really don't. And to have those opportunities and with the foundation and the trustees and the friends all working together like that and helping each other out, we do have those wonderful times that we can celebrate and we can all support the library that way. So I just wanted to throw that out. And that's about it for me. Do any of the other trustees have a report that they would like to give? Liz?
After talking with a couple of people, I'd like to be brave and make a motion to start our March meeting at 8:30 instead of 7:30 in the morning. So I move that we start our March meeting at 8:30 a.m. instead of 7:30 a.m., just to try that time.
Do we have--
If it dies--
Okay, do we have a second? And go from a second, then we'll discuss it.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion.
Well, be behaved.
Discussion. Is this something that would work for our current board members? In looking back in the past, it looks as far back as I could see, we've met at 7:30, but I don't see anywhere where it's actually-- I haven't seen the stone tablets where it's been decreed.
It's probably in the ordinance, but it's not a problem to call a special meeting to see why you tested out and decide then if you want to officially change it or not. It wouldn't be a problem.
I think the first order of concern would be with our current board and if this is something that we can do. Steve, is that a-- works for you?
Yeah. The only thing I would speak to is just knowing how we did meetings with the foundation. We did 7:30 in the morning, and then some people found it onerous. And then we did, we're going back and forth between 7:30 in the morning, 7:30 at night. Certain people couldn't do certain things. I mean, 7:30 in the morning is great, so it's done and you're gone, but it kind of prohibited people with small children from being part of the board because they had to get their kids off to school so they couldn't be part of the foundation board. I don't know if that's necessarily applicable here, so I don't have strong feelings one way or the other.
I very much agree with the 7:30 meeting. I mean, people have other places to go and 7:30, you get it over with, you have the rest of your day.
The rest of your day.
I have an 8:30 office meeting. I'm, you know, just, I don't know.
Any other comments, Alvin?
I mean, we talked about this a while ago.
I think we did.
We were going to change the time.
I think it's come up.
And I think we all unanimously agreed to keep it at 7:30.
Just keep it at 7:30.
Because it's easy for people to get to. I'm retired, I could have it at 9:30. How about lunch meeting?
Well, and I feel the same. You know, I'm in that same position of being retired and not having--
Me too.
--to deal with this. Genevieve, how about, you have younger children.
I do not.
Well, they're a lot younger than mine.
I've been acting as a for, I don't know, five years. Oh, yes. So no, I'm okay either way. But, you know, if I have to sacrifice a little bit of some other activity once a month, it's okay. Whichever way.
Yeah, and I think that if we changed it from 7:30, we would probably have to go to 8:30 to avoid the traffic, the congestion here as people are dropping off at Huntington.
And 8 o'clock is their start time for the school.
By 8:30, things would have calmed down.
And why would you want to put 8:30, just because it'll longer?
Well, I think I still get up early, but I don't have to be places by 7:30 in the morning. And my other thought was that as we're getting into the budget part of the year and this capital priority list, and we've had a lot of personnel changes in the last few months and a reorganization, that we might want some other members of the city staff to attend our meetings in March, maybe April regarding the budget and the capital priority list, especially if Irene's not the one anymore to present it to the city council. And so I thought also that we might be more-- present company accepted Amanda, but it might be-- the other staff might come if it's at 8:30. But we can also invite them and stay till 8:30 and have them speak at a certain time on the agenda.
I do know, because I reckon library do follow different schedule, but anyone in city policy, we start at 7:00. So the 7:00 is not, 7:30 is not prohibited.
I'm satisfied. But we appreciate it.
This is your late meeting.
This is a late meeting.
No coffee for you.
I mean, I was going to break it up because I showed it.
Congratulations!
That is a great news.
Thank you.
I have a doctorate more than five after, so it's just, it was 7:30 was when we ended our meeting. I just, I can always be scheduled.
Do we maybe want to just give it a try for one month and see how it feels?
Might be a good idea.
Just as a--
I think--
And with the budget coming up, maybe March would be a good time to do that.
I think I said in my motion, a March meeting at 8:30, not all meetings in perpetuity.
Oh, just--
Why don't we try it? Can I restate my--
Yes. Amend your--
So I'd like to make a motion to begin the March meeting at 8:30 a.m. to try it out, to see if we ultimately want to make that change. But as I said, my thoughts about March and the budget and timing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so this will be a one-time, and we can discuss it maybe towards the end of the March meeting to see how everybody feels at that point. And we, in the meantime, will see if there is anybody else on city staff that we might want to attend our March meeting. So we have a motion on the floor. Vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. In March, we will meet at 8:30. We'll be back to 7:30 in April if we don't make another decision.
Sorry, the meeting's 23rd?
Yes.
That's the 21st, was it?
23rd.
23rd. Okay. Mary, the Crane Art Gallery.
Oh, okay. Crane Art Gallery, artists have good news. And we are, we didn't receive any income last month. However, we are scheduled all the way to May 29th. So our gallery committee also met on January 23rd. We had an offer to exhibit at our, and it was accepted. So we need to arrange for that time. But currently, we have two scheduled artists. One is a landscape artist, Justin Metta. He likes the outdoor. He liked to instill life and inner voice into his artwork. Another one, and he is scheduled for February 29th to April 10th. So if you'd like to see that type of artwork, please come join us. From April 18th to May 29th, we will have a new media painting by Sean Kepatrick. Now, we know working with acrylic epoxy enamel, but with gold. So with gold on the stretch canvas. I'm curious how these artists put golds on artwork. I know, we know ceramic, they put gold, they paint gold actually. But a painting to put gold. Now, it is, it is an interesting reflection of San Marino. Does it have any correlation? We will yet to find out. So it's from April 18th to May 29th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Just a historic aside, early paintings that you see in museums that look very gold, that is gold.
Oh, that's--
It's not paint, it's gold leaf.
Sure.
The old Byzantine paintings, so they did do that.
We have extras.
Well, I'm just, I'm still learning. Thank you. Let's move on to new business. March 11th, we have our annual joint meeting with city council. And for--
Actually, I don't know.
Has that been changed? Go ahead.
Yeah, I can explain, and we're apologies for late notice. For a variety of reasons, one being I know council has quite a few items on their agenda and closed session issues that need to come up, but also with the kind of an attempt to reassess the joint meetings and make them more productive for everyone. We're actually pausing at the moment, and we're looking to reschedule all of them and change the time of year for everyone. So our city clerk will probably be reaching out to you both to find the right time in the coming weeks. And if you have thoughts on how those meetings would be better structured, I know they've been kind of free form in the past, but if you have thoughts on kind of a better way to make them more productive, we'd love to hear that as well.
What do you want of council? What does the council want to accomplish when we have the joint meeting? What do they, I mean, it was a party--
Historically, the commissions would, or boards would bring up issues of concerns, wants, questions for the city council. It really was quite open and, as Amanda's referencing, left to the body to sort of leave the discussion, "It's your time," so to speak. And thank you for that update, I didn't know that had occurred. Do we know when we want to get them back on schedule again?
We do, I know soon, and I know Marcel will probably talk to you guys about that to get that going.
I'd be interested in any, you know, questions or hot issues that other council members have for us that we, if we're going to speak to them, we'd want to know what they want to know.
And as you know, going into budget time, we're starting to get preoccupied with that. But as a council group, this is our third year developing the budget, and I hope you felt it last year. We're becoming more streamlined and with capital improvement issues, we have a set date for that. So I hope you have less anxiety in working with us this year. I think we're getting at a more together point internally. So as far as the other meetings, hopefully we'll have an update soon.
Yeah, it'll be soon. I'm sure by next month, we could probably already have something by then scheduled, or at least the plan for--
I agree with Liz that it would be good for us to know what the council wants to talk about so we can prepare for it, instead of just going in and get blindsided by some question.
Historically, we do not bring issues to you historically, but we could certainly reframe it. I think that the thought being is, what do you like about the way you're operating and what could the city council assist for things to be better? But not to pick favorite children, but this body spins like a top, so it's a joy to meet you. Whereas some other bodies have difficulty in understanding their purposefulness. And one in particular has really been going through a process with that recently, and it's starting to come into place quite nicely. But this group, of course, is well viewed, and I commend each of you for keeping it that way.
Thank you, Susan. We always like to hear things like that. Makes us feel good. In the past, I know we've always enjoyed our meeting with city council. And we've tended to, at least as long as I've been on the board, spend that meeting mostly giving city council an idea of what we've been up to in the year since we had met before. But that dialogue could certainly change to include hot button issues or whatever else needed to be addressed.
And I think even dreams would be a great idea to bring to us. Think outside of the box. As you know, in the city, each council operates differently.
You'd be careful what you wish for.
We have a strong push going on for economic development right now, and it's simply because of the composite of the council. So who knows what the library could bring to the table? Think bold and feel free to bring that to us also.
Okay. Well, the good news for everybody is you have a few extra minutes in your agenda between now and March 11th because you don't have to write a little five-minute speech to get to the city council. So we will add that to continuing business next, on next month's agenda, so that we can see where we go from there.
We know it's not going to be March 11th.
Just cross that date off.
Do we know when it will be approximately?
We don't yet. I think we may, because after that, it's going to be thick of the budget season, probably more than like the spring or summer would be my guess, but we'll get back to it as soon as we can and have an update.
So it wouldn't be before our meeting on the 23rd?
No, it will not be.
No.
Okay.
No.
It used to be later in the year.
Yeah.
It's been March as long as I've been on the board, so that's-- and that's been at least five years. Okay, let's move on to number two. The Library Journal Star. Journal Star Libraries, Kroll Library last year had a very-- we had very good news that we were the top five point, and I can't remember the point. 5.9%. We have moved up to the five point. Just get rid of that point. We are getting better, which is, as Irene can tell you all, that is not the trend nationwide with libraries, getting better. Libraries are struggling in the country, and we really need to be proud of what's going on here. We've got a very special facility.
Irene, can you tell us what the basis for the rating is?
It's programming, book purchasing. Those are mainly it. This is what I was putting in to the state. In September, I filed a report with the state, and I give them our statistics.
Okay.
So that's what they rated on.
When you say programming, it's the classes we offer and that type of thing?
Number of classes. So there are about 1,251 libraries in this budget class, which is a million to 5 million, and we're 1.5 million. But we were number 66 on that list. So it's pretty good ranking, I would say, for a small-town library.
Well, we have such a wonderful facility. We have places to have things.
Right.
You know, the ability to feature all these wonderful programs.
Right, right. So very, very proud.
We need to thank our council too, that keeps the budget, right? Some of the cities struggle with the budget. When you work without budget, we have a budget consistently backing us up for good work. And to support your leadership, the money is behind you.
Well, that's true with the strong foundation, strong friends, selling books for 25 cents and then giving $50,000.
That's a lot of books. Okay. Welcome, Hal. We have a guest, our foundation president. And you've come in at such an opportune time because the next item on the agenda, I am going to ask for a joint meeting of the foundation and the friends and the trustees in May on the 6th. Thinking about timing, decided that this probably should be an evening meeting and hopefully as many people as possible can come. I know in the past, we have had social gatherings up here in the Thornton Room. But for this one, I'd like to go down to the bathroom, and Irene and I checked, it's available. That's a very busy place. We had to kind of look for days that would work. To meet at 7:30 with the three boards and have it be a meeting where each of our boards can address whatever issues they want to at the time. Just pick maybe two items. We won't make it a really long meeting, but it will be a way that we can, that we can see how we might even, how we might better work together. I mean, we're doing a pretty good job right now. I think we've all agree with that. But the fact that our number-one concern for all three boards is this library, this facility, and making sure that it endures into the future, I think it can, we can only help it along better if we are really working together. And I don't know all the members on the foundation. I'd like to have the opportunity to get to know them better. The friends, I know some of them because we've had children that went through school together. But again, I think that this would be a way that we can bring concerns also. The foundation does such a fantastic job raising money for items that the trustees earmarked as important for the library. Maybe we can have some dialogue and see how that can work better, how we can make suggestions perhaps for items that are maybe a little bit more sexy and would draw attention and people's money better than others. We all know that that's, that that helps when you're raising money.
And the foundation, I spoke to the foundation members, they're all in support of a collaboration between the trustees, the foundation, and the friends. I truly believe that if we do that, we'll have actually greater support for the library.
I think so too.
And actually having that support level at the council. Since we're the foundations, we actually look to you, the trustee, on what to fund. And, you know, we'll be more than happy to generate that effort to get that done. But you as a trustee knows exactly what you need here. And, you know, one of the things that came up in one of the meetings was a maintenance schedule. I don't think you have one, but it'd be good to have one because it's, this is our 11th or 12th year, 12th year, and we haven't had a maintenance schedule, meaning things are going to start falling apart from now on in. And we need to maintain.
Yes.
So, you know, like painting, I don't think you have that in your budget. Just things that come up that break down, like chairs. And we could handle the computers, and the only thing that we ask to do is the staff and city to maintain it. So I think that that would go a long way. And it'd probably save us a lot of money if we were to just maintain what we have. And we're all in it. We don't, we're not the decision-makers here. We're actually working for you to make the money, get the money to do these things. And we're more than happy to do that. And I think a collaboration would really work out really well.
Well, I'm very happy to hear that. And with this, with this meeting, my goal is that it goes well, that this collaboration works, and we turn this into an annual event. And for now, it's May. We may decide it at a future time that may be a different month is better. But in thinking about it, and I know that this past fall, you did Delicious Destinations again, which was fabulous. But maybe meeting as early as May is a good thing. Because if you do have a fall event planned, that would be a good time to start.
I have to say that this is, this year, or this past year, we made the most money ever. We made over $100,000. Thanks to all of you for participating. It was an exciting event.
Did you net it over $100,000?
103, 105, to be exact.
Wow.
So I think with this collaboration, we could do even better. And we know that there's going to be things coming down the pipeline that needs to be replaced or just to be added. And I think that this is a really good venue to make these things happen. Without the destinations, we would probably only $30,000 in our budget. But then we've kind of grown. And we have taken the stance that we're going to do it every other year, otherwise we're going to lose board members because it's so stressful. I know Steve knows.
It's not my misport, Dan.
But yeah, with the friends and the trustees and the foundations coming together, I think it would be, the next one would be an awesome event. I mean, this one was pretty good too.
Oh, yes, I think we can all agree that was--
So kudos to everyone. And it's not just the foundation, because the foundation needs trustee support, the friend support, the community support to come in, you know, give us money. So it's great that they are willing to do that.
How about endowment, would you comment on that?
Well, the endowments, we're still working on it. We have a few, not much. We're planning to have that grow. It's kind of, I guess it's kind of a new thing for us foundation members. We had a few seminars on endowments, and there are families that are interested in creating an endowment for the foundation. So we're kind of working on it, but we're kind of a little bit behind as far as the learning curve on that one. We're looking at, looking towards the school's foundation on how they do their endowments. And there's a few members there that we spoke to that are really an expert in endowments, and they've offered to help if there's any interest in that. So that's our next task. Our first task was get some money for the library.
Yeah.
Our next task is keep that money for the future. That's what the endowment will do for us. So keep in touch.
Well, we will, we will do that. I'd like to make a motion then that we have a joint meeting on May the 6th in the bathroom at 7:30.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Just for clarification, it's 7:30 p.m.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Is it your intention to also invite Josette Espinoza, the community services director? She works on Wednesdays.
That would be--
And she's overseeing library and the rec department, is that correct?
Yes, but she is interim, she may not be here at--
Well, we could invite her. And if not, then the person who then communicates the budget. But by May 6th, we should know. I mean, the May 6th budget calendar, you're almost done with your budget. You're almost to the point of adopting the whole budget. So what would be good about that too is that we know what capital improvement is going to go forward that we're going to ask for city money for. And then when other projects need other funds out, okay.
I did see some of the list, but it's probably not a finalized list in your draft. Okay. So when that gets finalized, we'd like to work with you on seeing which ones are priority for you. And really, it's about the amount. But if we know exactly what you're looking for and prioritize it, we could actually make that as a goal for our next Delicious Destination or others. We actually have, for this year's, we're going to be doing a sort of a flea market type of thing, where we're going to bring some money in the interim only because we need to fill this year's gap with something a lot smaller. So we're looking at that, and that money, we're anticipating maybe about $25,000 would come in. So we're looking at things that would not only be just the Delicious Destination, but some other things, even a special lecture series except that, where we invite an author to come in. And yeah, that sounds exciting. And have a talk during a luncheon or something like that. And, and have a talk during a luncheon or something like that. And that will bring some revenue in that would also help out the library. So we're not just relying solely on Delicious Destination because we do have a year in between that we could actually experiment with other fundraising events. So, so that's a good thing. My question is, would May be too late, should I ask Susan, for any decisions or anything? Or is that something that?
Too late on decisions.
On any budgeting items? Because I, I believe that by May, we've already solidified the.
Oh, we're, we're still fairly early in the process in terms of getting everyone's input. So we have just, on our agenda for this week is the priorities. So we're, we're still quite early.
But by May, I think you're saying, yes, it would be very far into the budget process.
When is the budget completed?
The goal is to adopt, I have it in front of me, so I know. The goal is to adopt it on either May 13th or the 29th. We have June as kind of the way if council comes back with changes.
But what I think, we'll know by that May 6th meeting, what project is, is, my note today, what project is at the top that we want to support going forward to the capital improvement process to ask for city money for. And once that, we know that, then Irene will help us know what are the other projects that need to be done. And then I think from that, this, I hope the foundation looks at it to say, not only what are the library's needs, but what project helps the foundation fundraise.
Now, one of the things that the members had stressed is that, and I mentioned it before about the maintenance schedule, is that the foundations, I think bylaws are saying that, that they generally don't do maintenance, like they pay for painting and they pay for re-polishing the plaques and things like that. So if you just keep that in mind, that we would be more than happy to replace or add to the library. But the, the foundation members think that the general maintenance for the facility is basically up to the city. I don't know if people agree with that, but I think it makes sense.
I think being prompted with the schedule is a good idea.
I think they're really anxious to see that eventually, but they're saying that that will really help them and probably all three of us, the friends, the trustees and the foundations, see what's coming up and what we could.
Well, it'll, it'll help us to project into the future too. You know, where in May, we, we won't have, have the ability to impact this year's budget. But it's always good to have a whole year's start on what we want for the next year. And that will, will put us in a good position of working together with, along with Irene to, to make sure that we.
Yes, that's fantastic. I think that would be a great start to continuing this building for many, many years, just to keep that maintained in great shape.
When you have your next meeting, please thank the members of what a great job you did on that Delicious Foundation.
I will, thank you very much.
Yes.
I'm not sure how we could top the next one, but we'll try.
It's really fabulous and it's a fun time to see, to see residents that I normally don't see.
And everyone came. It's not just the schools, it's just not like the Chinese club or anything like that. It's the community here. I'm talking about, I, we have friends that have already graduated, maybe five years ago, six years ago, don't ever see them. I saw them at the Delicious Destinations and little, I don't see many of the parents.
That's great.
But there they are. So it's a great community event and I'm hoping that it would last forever.
Okay, let's move on to the next item. New business, we wanted to be sure that everybody was aware that the library is a voting center. I was a little surprised when I got my sample ballot in the mail that it didn't list the library on it. It told me a number of places in Pasadena I could go and.
There's a separate one that I got.
Did you say what?
Yeah.
And I'm not very far away. Would you, Irene, could you let us know a little bit about this process? What is happening?
Yes, you may have noticed a vessel, a giant storage.
Which is against code, but that's.
Yeah, they asked me to put it somewhere else, but they didn't. So that contains the voting machines. So on Friday afternoon, they'll come here and they'll set up the voting machines in the Barth Community Room. And then the Barth will be off limits to the public and to the staff until after voting ends on March 3rd. So, and then they'll come and pick up the machines. So we, we're feeling very good about it. We feel like we're doing our part and supporting the voting, the new voting system. And also I anticipate that we'll be doing it in November as well. So we're hoping for a big turn.
Have they told you how many machines will be at this particular site?
They have not.
They're, I think they're broken into three groups. I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know.
And we also have set up with the mayor's help, the League of, or the League of Women Voters is coming in on Wednesday at 3:30 to 4:30 and 6:00 to 7:00 to do some demos and just helping people understand. It is new, it's a lot different than how you've voted in the past. So we got that set up rather quickly to see if anyone has questions and wants to kind of get a little more information before they vote. So they'll be here on this Wednesday.
This Wednesday. Has anyone seen the actual? No, I haven't. I. It looks almost like a keyboard where you can either sit in a wheelchair or with walker. You can pick up headphones and hear your options. You can take a screen and pick which of the 16 or 17 languages. You can enlarge the font. You can tilt the screen. You can bring your phone in where you have already gone to the site, marked your choices, stick it in, get your print. It, it does just about everything except walks and talks. And it's this cheesy looking little thing. And there's only one electric cord going into it. So then when you feed it in, then you get the receipt back and that's what you're submitting. But it's really fascinating and the sensitivity to all individuals is what I think you'll find amazing. But like I said, this registration process may cause the confusion because one can walk in without a lot of ID, can change their vote. And as was asked at the meeting, if they go to another site the same day, these provisionals are all gathered with very short notice down in Norwalk. So there's a few glitches, but I think it'll go very, very well.
So do you go to a, a registration page so that you can't vote twice?
If you are an ongoing voter, but if you are, I think they use the term transient or whatever, somebody who is not currently on the list, they take some information from you, but as you know, this whole picture ID is becoming a controversial issue. So there's not a lot required. So if you haven't voted in a few years and you maybe want to come here and vote, if you go someplace else, you still have to sign your provisional. And it's when it gets to Norwalk that they allegedly will pull all these different duplicates.
I hope this equipment's not the equipment that they used in Iowa.
They're like, it's the same thing. They still do. It's still, although it's high tech, there still is a paper trail. That's what's interesting about it. It still prints out and you can check what, before you turn it in. So they actually, after all that technology, are using a paper ballot actually.
It's still getting a paper ballot.
I voted on Saturday in Pasadena. The ballot's like this big, well, bigger than this actually. It's a big sheet. I thought there's one thing, if your name is on the bottom of the list, if someone did not scroll down all the way, you might be completely missed, you know?
But they did a study on this. They did a mock election in November with a few thousand people from start to finish to see about the gathering and this issue of names going over to a second page, the fear that people. And every study has shown that people did, did go to the second page. Because the number of mock people who were listed on the second page won at sometimes a higher rate. So that's encouraging.
Okay, yeah, because I was thinking, hmm, if you're not on the first page, you might be disadvantaged. Maybe there's a next button.
Yeah. You have to get to that next button before you.
If you don't hit that, I was thinking if they programmed that, I mean, programmed that, if you have to click on the next before you could actually make a choice, then that prevents people not seeing the second page. So that was my little concern.
I assume they'll have people here to assist.
I believe so.
Someone to come in to help them vote.
Many county employees this time, as opposed to citizens or students.
Volunteers.
Yeah, and if you, if there's complaints, obviously our city clerk, Eva, can help, but it is a county run election, the city's not involved besides giving the location for the polling place. But obviously still call us with any concerns and we can help coordinate.
We'll go from voting to census.
Census is coming up. Census Day is April 1st. We'll set up a, a couple of public internet access computers to be census computers. And we'll have some volunteers on the weekends at specified times to help people fill out the census if they want to. So we have a couple, we have Mary Ullin on the foundation, is very pro census, so she's looking, she'll be helping us set that. So I just wanted to let you know. That concludes my report on the census.
On the census. And then our last item on new business, a grant proposal to refurbish the young adult area.
The young adult area has seen better days and there's some paint chipping off and the kids keep chipping off the paint.
So. As children are.
As children do. So I, I've proposed that I put in a grant proposal to the Women's Club of San Marino to see if they would be willing to refurbish that room because they, they support women and children and.
Wonderful.
They didn't leave out teens, so.
Yeah.
So I'm going to write a grant proposal. I just wanted to let you know.
Is there a cap for their grant?
I don't think so.
Wonderful.
How much do you propose?
At least five thousand, I think.
Yeah, the beanbag chairs have seen better days and the, there's some threadbare upholstery and yes, things that need to be refurbished.
Just for my curiosity, why do we not have a maintenance clause in our physical facility to maintain our site at least a minimum something? Why, it's logical to have it, it's such a big facility.
Yeah, that, that's what Hal was, was addressing earlier. And I think, I think we've all, we're all on that page that we need to get that, that in, in place so that we don't end up with a lot of deferred maintenance.
Right. And I'll mention that on the 2021 budget update, what's what we're talking about.
I think a year ago, we had a schedule.
We've talked about it.
Okay. The, the, one of the, one of the representatives here from the city, who's his name?
Out of, out of that discussion, where are some of the items that are on the capital improvement?
Yeah.
But list right now, the painting and the window tinting and things like that. But I think if we get down to actual, you know, this chair needs to be reupholstered in two and a half years, kind of, kind of thing. We need to, we need to get a list of, of everything that's facility related.
Right.
Okay, on to continued business, capital improvements.
Yes, everyone's so excited. So unfortunately, the list was not ready for the agenda distribution, but I was able to make some updates this morning. So if you all want to grab some copies.
Is it different from last time?
Yes.
Okay.
So there have been a few, several developments in regards to even just the current projects that are underway now. So just going down the list, the entry canopy, there was concern mentioned at the last meeting about the design, the layout and things like that. So I went to Public Works just to make sure that we hashed out the final details and more questions came up. And it appears that when Chris Yu had started the project, his initial idea of it was different than what was later conveyed to me. And what I received was conveyed to Public Works, but when we finally all met together, apparently we are all on different pages on the project. The other thing was that the beams are hollow and cannot support weight, period.
Oh, that's wonderful. I thank you for doing that.
Yes, so as a result of that, the project is going to go through a sizable change order and Public Works is handling it from here on out. So I haven't received any updates or an updated timeline onto that, but Public Works is handling that project.
Does that change the cost?
Yes.
Do what?
That's the question. And so what Public Works is going to request is an actual frame installed over the beams. And that's going to be a sizable cost increase because when I got quotes, a frame easily started at twelve thousand dollars.
I'm, I'm sorry, can I hear you for a second? Because we're, I think we're kind of mixing two things, the canopy and what's over the entrance of the door as opposed to what's over the bookshop.
Right. So what's over, what's going to be over the main entrance has not changed. That will be the same design. What's going over the beams by the bookshop, that's going to have to change.
Okay. The word canopy, to me, was for the front doors as opposed to the other things.
Okay, I have a question then. If Public Works is going to take this on, are they going to do, are they going to look at whether this is the proper way to address the water issue? Because I think when, when this came up quite a while back, this was when Chris was here in discussion, it, the water going into the bookshop isn't just because of the rain that's coming down in front of the door. It's because of, of the way, of the grading of the side, the sidewalk there was not done right. And that would definitely be a Public Works project to fix it. And if that was done, I mean, it would still be nice to have a canopy and awning. But the, the necessity would, would be, would change.
Right.
And maybe even the, the size and the, the strength of what's up there. Because the, the water is going to continue. It's, it's coming down, it's going downhill and it, it follows the easiest path. And the easiest path right now is right in the doorway of the bookshop. And you know, unless that's addressed, I think they're going to continue having trouble, whether there's a canopy or an awning or, or not. And so I, I would really like to see Public Works at, at least do a, a study. And they're the ones who have the expertise in, you know, how this should, I just know that it's not quite right. I couldn't tell you what the angle should be or how to fix it.
What's the best, longest term fix for the problem of water flooding the store?
If it is the grading, then that has to be resolved because.
It might not be this project for a canopy at all.
Right. I truly.
Yeah, I have found Michael Throne to be an outstanding civil engineer. And I think as long as you look. That's my understanding. At the entire exterior area, to not limit anything, but that whole block and the perimeter, I think if you have your liaison, who knows the most, working with him, you'll wind up with a great product.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, if you would, I, whether it's putting drainage in or doing something with concrete.
Right.
Yeah, when we talked about it before, the drainage was really the issue.
Yeah.
So it was a matter, yes, the rain was coming down, but it was going in instead of to the courtyard.
Yeah, and I know the drains have been an issue just all throughout the facility. I know there's a drain within that patio area and when it started to rain, that easily flooded.
It goes up, yes, it does.
Yeah, so I know there's, there's a lot of work that needs to be done.
Yeah.
Any other questions on that item?
Yes.
When will we have an update?
I'll speak to Public Works after this and then I'll see if I can get something.
Is it the next meeting or?
At the next meeting, that will be an update, yes.
Okay, Liz?
So since last April, and the former analyst, Chris Yu, started this capital priority list, and a lot of the costs are still the same from last April, and I wouldn't expect for them to be updated until we're about ready to do a project. But the reason for this, and look at, I mean, you've done a great job and we can read it in a big font. And, but the reason is to have one document that identifies the priorities, prioritizes our capital needs and prioritizes them, and I think you said this too, Hal, as viewed by Irene, the city librarian and her staff. Hal has great ideas, I have great ideas, we go way back. And, but. go way back. And, but it's what the library staff feels is important. And I think one of the things that came to mind about why this is important is in our packet for today's meeting, they include the foundation, and it's from your January meeting, January 10. And it talked about the life, the foundation board discussing fundraisers. And I thought, well, why are you raising money? Do we have a project yet? And the foundation board was told that we, at the library board, have two priorities, full staffing, we all like full staffing, and the electronic bestsellers list, which we talked about, but none of these kinds of projects that we're looking at on the capital priority list were brought to them, and it, it might not be time yet, but I think this is for them too, and this is for the friends, and this is for the lady up the street who wants to donate $5,000 to the library. But it's also to show Susan and her colleagues on the city council that we're only asking for a fraction, a little fraction, of the, the money to fulfill the library's needs, we're asking of the city, and then we're going to go forward and fund it with other means. We do have the foundation and the friends. We also have $51,000 unallocated dollars in the city coffers to accomplish some of these things. And it's amazing that we don't have some up-to-date costs, even though the public computer replacement, we know the foundation is committed to $35,000, but that's still, we still don't know what the actual costs are going to be. The window tinting and the interior painting, I'd like to have a conversation about because I think that goes to what some people have brought up in terms of ongoing maintenance.
Right.
I like to see it on this list because it's a need that you've identified, but I think it goes, either the library is responsible to fund it, or somebody else is responsible to fund the interior painting and the window tinting and, you know, I don't know whose responsibility those costs are, but I think that's an important project. If it's all in one place, and we can say to the city council, this is what we need, they'll say this is what we'll fund, and then we'll go forward with being able to find money for the other projects.
Right. And so my question was, if there were any questions for the entry canopy, because I'm going to go line by line on all of these.
Oh, sorry.
That's what I thought you were.
I will say that I will give kudos to Josette Espinoza. She called several of us after the last meeting, and thank you for communicating the information.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'd like to add that what Liz said is, is right on, is we don't really know what, what the trustee is advocating for, or even, you know, what they can advocate for. So we get our cues from the trustees, Irene, and, and then we throw it into this list of, a wish list, and then we look at the numbers versus how much it's going to cost to, to do any of these, and then we, we actually recommend projects that are of priority to you, to the trustees, to the city, and see how we could align that with our funding goals. And so, so I think this is a perfect scenario for us to collaborate because, you know, we're, we're kind of like at the door waiting for the ticker to come in, and once it does, we discuss it. But if we don't have anything to, to really judge what's, what's needed, it's kind of difficult, because a lot of the, the sponsors and the donors are, are kind of curious to know how, what, what that money is going to. And, you know, if we say, oh, it's going to avoid flooding or upgrading the Barth AV, you know, that's something that's saying, oh, yeah, I can relate to that. I'll give a link to that. So really, it would be good if we had a list of projects that we could advocate for. So I think this is perfect. This whole process is actually something that we're looking for.
Does it help the city?
You want to go on to the next item?
Sure.
Does it help the city council to know the projects that the library wants to accomplish?
Oh, absolutely. And I think.
Even if we're not asking you?
Maybe not.
Do we have a date?
And I think.
Do you have, do you have a date when the canopy project will be completed?
I don't know. They need to do the change order, and then once we have that, we'll need to, again, that's Public Works handling that, so they'll have to do revisions. The change order, depending on the amount, may have to go to council, so that may impact the timeline.
What do you mean, may?
Yeah.
Put you in a very nice position, listing everything that you are.
We'll be ready for the rain.
Well, we get, yeah, that's right. We get ready, get through the, no more rain.
Okay. So no more questions on the entry canopy? So the next one is the Barth AV upgrade. So that finally went out to bid. We had the pre-bid meeting last Wednesday, so that's the opportunity for the vendors to come onsite, do the measurements, see where everything's going to be installed, and then from that, they will actually create the bid, and that'll follow up about a timeline of, we have to give them 10 days, the bids will come back, and then we'll review.
What kind of interest was there in the pre-bid meeting?
So there was only one vendor who attended, but the pre-bid meeting was not required as part of the process, and so from my understanding, there is two other vendors interested, and I believe Intellisys will may submit a bid as well.
Oh, good.
So thus far, it's sounding like four. And then.
Just may?
May.
So, is this a use it or lose it fund?
That's a good question. I know it has to be done by the end of this fiscal year because it's been allocated.
If not, you would have to propose it, I guess, to carry over to the next fiscal year.
So did you put that, a deadline in that RFP as well?
Yeah, so they have 10 days from when the bid is posted.
From when they must bill us to have the project done, punch listed, and paid for?
Uh, that I need to get more information on, and so I can provide an update at the next meeting.
Okay. And then with the entry canopy, sorry, I know, what happens if through this review with Public Works, if it comes in at a higher cost than when the city council already allocated that $39.65?
Then it would have to go back to council to request additional funds.
Okay, thank you.
In regards to the bathroom upgrade, their major upgrades are going to be, so the HDMI connection, the wireless connection capabilities, so if you have your iPhone to do a wirelessly streaming, there will also be a Blu-ray player. The projector will also be upgraded. The challenge with that, though, is it is a four-by-three projector, so it's more of a square. All new presentations are by the 16-by-9, which means that the screen may have to be changed out as well. That'll impact the cost. The podium, all the cords, as you all pretty much see, will be removed, and it'll be wireless mics. As far as that project questions.
Come back to us if you need a new screen.
Okay.
Modernized, right?
Yes.
The screen is not that expensive, is it?
No, a couple thousand dollars.
Is it a couple thousand dollars?
Yeah, so right now it's estimated to be almost about $20,000. It may increase depending on what the bids propose. And then.
Do you have a date when these bids will be back?
They have 10 days, so I believe another week is what they have. So, so by the end of this week is when the bids should have been received.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Any questions on the bathroom?
I just have a comment on, I'm sorry, the canopy. I'm still digesting that. So maybe we're barking at the wrong tree, because if the, the problem is that the water drainage flow on the foundation, why do we need to do a canopy?
Right. Yeah, so I'll have that conversation for Public Works.
Yeah, Public Works is going to look at that.
Right. So maybe we're.
Still need the canopy for the front doors.
Yes. We still need, but that, that slope is straight. You don't have water flow.
That's not for water issue.
It's for just the, oh, I see. So it's a two different issue.
Yeah, the front is for the heat that gets in.
Okay.
Well, it is partial rain, so there are the sensors, and so during the rain, sometimes it comes in, we don't want it to get onto the sensors and potentially damage them. So that's why there is that canopy over the main entrance.
Yeah, but the, the main entrance, the canopy, but you're talking about the bookstore need a canopy too?
No, I'm not saying that.
No, that's what Public Works is going to look at that.
Yeah, just a rhetorical reference. The whole notion of a canopy over the bookstore came from the friends. There was a person who thought, hey, there's rain coming in here, and we need a canopy. That's, that's where it came from. No scientific basis for whatever, just a person's personal opinion, and that's why that came.
Okay, so that's a stance, barking at the wrong tree. The foundation drainage is an issue, why would the canopy?
Yeah, okay. But I'll make sure to. The next one is the public computers. So that one is actually next on the continuing business, so I'll skip over that for now. The window tinting, so it's been a challenge to get the information that Chris Yu got. It's been time consuming for Intellisys to be able to go into his emails and extract the information that I need, both keywords and et cetera, et cetera. So I haven't been able to figure out which vendors he contacted, what specifications he asked for. But in the entry canopy conversation, we also talked about the window tinting conversation. And what's come up is that we may be able to look at the option of Public Works simply purchasing the filming and installing it in-house. The challenge is, if we want good quality film like 3M, you have to go through an authorized dealer, and sometimes they want a strong arm unit to do the installation costs. So I'm trying to see what alternatives we may be able to budget for on that one. So that's why there's that range of costs, because it's, if we can acquire it outright, it'll be cheaper, or we'll have to go with the installation. Any questions on the window tinting?
And that is, we need to get that done by July 1st to keep that money? Or is it funded by anybody?
This is for next fiscal year's budget, so.
So if it's a priority, do you have to ask for the money again?
Technically, we have to take it back to council, yes.
If, unless this is Public Works, a project that's done internally.
Right.
Okay, great. Let's do that.
We could.
You're saying this was never approved. You were planning on this for this coming fiscal year.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's why.
There's no July deadline on this one, right?
Right, because you don't even have the money yet.
I see. You don't even have the money yet. Okay.
Oh, and then that was the other thing I forgot to mention, is that at the last meeting, there was direction given for us to meet as staff, prioritize the different projects, and then bring it in. So the ranking here is, first, number one was window tinting to a security camera system. And then staff had originally identified purchase new seating and furniture as number three. However, that was proposed after the capital improvement deadline, and that is an item that we are potentially just even looking for, the maintenance schedule.
What's the capital improvement number?
That was early January.
What is it?
That came from Michael Throne, our Public Works director, saying, this is the deadline that we need to submit the Public Works requests, and so we hadn't given anything new by that deadline. So what, what is here is what has been submitted from last year and just carried over, and we are revising it.
Will this be an annual deadline, then? Should we be looking at January of 2021 as our must-get-in-by-this date? That, I mean, that's really important for us to know.
That's a great question. I'd have to ask.
I would say, I mean, that's a safe bet, but there's still, the budgets calendar works that by January, you should have more.
I need clarity. So with the public, I thought it's an ongoing thing. If we have something broken, we call the public work and they rush over to rescue us. So it doesn't work that way. You mean, we have to mind that? I just want clarity. So if we need any work, we fire a request, and then with the public work, and we wait until they prioritize us, until it's our turn? So we would look disgraced for that long a period? I'm, I'm just getting clarity. I shouldn't use that word. So how does this work? Do we change any procedure? I know our library is getting older, so this become an issue. When we were young and beautiful, we don't really care. But now we're getting, we need some cosmetic surgery, maybe. So we do care, right? I mean, right?
Not me. I'm not going.
Okay, maybe we just need some new clothing. How about that?
There you go.
Make up, yeah. We just need some makeup. So do we have to wait for the public work? I'm a little confused. I just want clarity.
So this is a, this is what we plan for the future, what we know needs to be improved upon. But if something breaks, so for example, the boiler happens to break, that is classified as an emergency, and Public Works does it immediately, and we will simply extend it out of the current fiscal year.
Okay, so that doesn't have to have been fitted into our budget?
So window, window tinting is a wish. It's not an emergency.
Right.
It's a wish. It's a good wish, because in the long run, it's going to end up saving us money.
Right.
On electricity and wear and tear on everything inside the building. So, yeah. Right.
But it's still, it's not an emergency. Public Works will come in and take care of that, so.
So we need to set it up with the public work in advance.
That's what we're doing, yeah.
First, we have to get a budget approved. Secondly, we set it up with the public work. So two different things have to align. So first, we ask for the budget. Second, we align them. Once it's approved, we align them with the public work, so they come to work. That's the, I'm, I'm asking.
So how it works is that the department will create their wish list. They'll figure out the rough numbers. They'll send it to Public Works. Public Works takes everything from the city, from all the departments. They create the capital improvement plan, typically a five-year plan, and then whatever that goes, goes now to the city manager, then there's more discussion, and then whatever the city manager creates then goes to the city council for budget approval.
Oh, so the other way around. It's to the public work first, then to the city.
You know, they've seen all of these projects. So tell me again, why are we out of January? This is the first we've heard that there was a January cutoff for introducing projects to be considered for capital improvement or capital projects.
Right. So Chris Yu presented these items last year, so then Michael Throne came forward and said, do you have any new projects to add in addition to this by the January deadline?
Why weren't we asked in November or in October about new projects that we wanted to put forward? And Robert, you might not be the right person to be asking or answering that. Please.
Yes, I'm not too sure what happened in that instance, but once the information came to us, I know that Josette sent out an email to Irene and to recreation staff asking if there were any new projects, and we didn't receive anything by that deadline. So as a result, Michael Throne said, okay, so if no new projects were received, we can adjust what it then is on the list from last year.
So this young adult refurbishing that room. So we, Irene writes a wonderful grant to the women's club. They give her the money. And what happens? Does Public Works have to say how much it's going to cost? Let's say the foundation decides to buy the furniture, and they pay for it outright. The city has no more control over that project. So I think this deadline, I can see if you gave him the security camera system, and the security camera's been on for over a year, and it has not changed in the estimate. It was even in, in the estimate of $25,000 came from Chief Ruetta's February report. It didn't even come from Public Works, and it didn't even come from the library staff.
Right.
Came from the fire chief. So why isn't there a better, firmer cost?
Right. So that's, again, I'm trying to figure out where these files are from Chris Yu, if there are any. I did, however, in digging up some of the emails, find one interesting one regarding the security camera issue. And he apparently reached out to San Marino Security Systems, and they currently provide our current alarm system. What they estimated the replacement was to be about $15,000, and they would gift us the labor. So the total cost should have been $30,000, but apparently what it's saying is by their goodwill, they'd be willing to give us a discount. So that's a conversation I still have to have with San Marino to see if that goodwill still stands. If so, then we will adjust the figures. But until I have those basically in writing, I'm wary of adjusting the numbers.
I was feeling like we were in a real good position with the city's, you know, this budget calendar, and where we were at, and looking at what was going to go forward for capital improvements and equipment, as well as, you know, the new budget that we've been talking about. But it's two things. It seems to me like this January date is artificial and prevents us from adding projects. And I think the other thing is, why are we just getting costs for projects that were approved last July 1st? It seems like July 2nd, we should have been getting some of the entry canopy and the Barth AV thing. I know the computer thing is different because you were buying computers for the whole city, but I think this is late in the game to also be looking at some of the projects from last year. But now we're also being told it's late in the game for looking at projects that we're not even firm on. So I'm very dis, very discouraged by this.
So you've officially submitted your capital improvement projects up the chain, correct?
Yes, of course, last year.
But for this coming year, with the January.
So Robert now has that job, and he, there's a big gap, because he doesn't, they didn't give him the information. give him the information.
What I'm thinking is, if you wish to amend it, to attempt and say there was a misunderstanding, here's what we really want, give firm costs, detail the projects and priorities, attempt an amendment?
Yes, and those are the conversations that I'm having from Michael Throne. So there are the items in red, and those are the ones that we, Josette and I are fervently talking to Michael Throne to see if we can make amendments. The other, for example, one of the things that came up was bathroom lighting, that wasn't identified by the January deadline, but now it's something that was mentioned as potentially needing improvements. So we're seeing what the wiggle room is to be able to see how much of an adjustment we can make on these projects and these requests.
Considering it hasn't reached council yet...
Right.
My attitude is it can't hurt to submit, you know, where's possible you're out the effort, but respectfully, give it a push.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, and I hear what you're saying about being out the effort, but if the council declines to fund it, then you have a pretty accurate figure to go elsewhere for your funding. Can you go on with the other items?
Sure. Do we have any questions on the security camera system?
Oh, is there a monthly fee to store the, you know, like I have to pay Nest or Arlo to store what they're recording?
So, with currently, we do have Nest, and there is a monthly fee.
But it doesn't work, why are we paying it?
It works now.
So is that, where is that in our budget?
That's included online item, equipment, hold on, contract services, IT.
And so in looking at a security camera system, is that part of it too? What's the cost, monthly cost, ongoing?
So what the proposal is, there wouldn't necessarily be a monthly cost, because it would be a closed circuit, so we would just have to pay for server capability, and that would just be an acquisition cost, be able to hold as much memory.
So there wouldn't be ongoing service costs, like with Nest?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions on that one? No, okay. So the next one in red is the computer room renovation. So this was a prioritized item for staff, and we, Hal, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we had an initial conversation that the foundation identified this project, the compromise with the city would be that the city would pay for the architectural and engineering fees, and the foundation may potentially pay for the construction costs.
Yeah, one of the reasons for that partnership is because if we were to move, wait till we move forward designing construction, you're still going to have to have costs. So why not have the design done now? And then possibly shell it until we get the money, but at least we'll have a rough order of estimate cost for the project, so that we could actually go out and try to see if that would be our goal for funding, because I don't even know how much it costs. Like, if, you know, if I were to say a number, it would be totally, I'll be blown out. But it would be giving us an indication of what the estimated cost would be, so that we could kind of target that. So our foundation suggested to Robert that we would, if the city could do the design, which shouldn't cost much, then we would know what the cost would be. So that, you know, you get your, you get your design and cost estimate, then we could go after the funding, or maybe the city council would say, you know, "That's not bad price, we'll take it." But without all that, we won't know what this cost is. So, and I definitely think that it would really help, because that room, it's a large decal room. It's fairly inefficient, because really, you know, you can't have, it's not organized to have smaller study session areas. Irene found that there's more, there's more demand for smaller enclosures than with those large ones, and so we're going to reconfigure it, you know, to give the public what they want.
So this is a discussion, again, that we're having with Michael Throne to see if that's feasible, and then what push we need to have to make this possible for next fiscal year. Any questions on that item?
And two thousand reservation, Crowell Reservation Server?
Yes, so that's on the next page as an item that was completed.
Can we finish the entry?
Yes, so the other item is the interior painting, and like Hal and all of you mentioned, the maintenance schedule needs to happen. And what happened in previous years was building maintenance was handled by each of the departments, now it's all handled by Public Works. So in order to create that maintenance schedule, we need to have the conversation with Public Works to create what that would look like. So that's something that I'm currently working on right now.
Twenty-one, twenty-two?
So that's what it was slated for the capital improvements list, but hopefully we can just take that off outright.
Take it outright, moving into the maintenance schedule. Oh, I see, you're there on the budget, right?
I think another thing that we talked about is if it becomes a library budget item, I mean, if the library becomes responsible for paying for that interior painting, that we put a line item in the budget and, like, put a few thousand dollars a year to do one part of the library, instead of painting the whole interior all at once as a project.
Right. Okay. Any other questions?
I'd rather echo his idea, because we really don't differentiate, not every room is damaging at the same time, you know, we use the same time.
Right.
It's the young adult, like, those young adults.
Some area.
Really? Yes, they do. Those kids.
And then on the back page, there was no changes onto those, because right now, the focus is just revising once for next year. Yeah. And then that last page, the Crowell Library Reservation Server was identified as completed, so I just marked that off, and then just keeping on this document so we can see our progress.
So the capital improvement presentation goes March 27th to the board. So when are we going to see the revised list of what you're proposing to the city?
Yes, because we wouldn't have a, we have that March 23rd.
Monday, March 24th?
No, 23rd, is it 23rd?
23rd, okay.
So we could see it, well, you all can see it then.
Except for, we could.
Or would you like to call it?
Here's the thing, so you meet, the city council meets this Friday, the 28th. The agenda for that meeting was posted last Friday, the 21st. So our agenda was posted, the city council agenda was posted, and we, if your request to the city council will be posted in public before we've seen it.
How would you want to proceed then? Do you want me to simply email an updated list?
That would be great, so that we could see it, but we already had saved March 11th to meet with the city council, right? Right? Could we meet on March 11th for half an hour to go over that, so that we, I think you have to go before the council with something approved by the library board.
We, you want to do it in the afternoon, then? During the time when we would have otherwise met with the council?
We already...
Because it would have been 5 o'clock on 5:00 PM, as opposed to AM, on March 11th?
Our next four meetings, March 23rd.
Right.
Which is 8:30, and then the capital improvement plan presentation is on March 27.
But Mary, so you know how Jennifer sends us our packet on Friday? That's when the city council gets their packet for the Friday meeting, too. So it will already be posted in public before we would have a chance to respond to that list.
Got it. So when do they get the package?
Another thing we could do, I don't know how you guys feel about it, is to send Irene and Robert forward with, this is what the list should be, and then you forward it to us, but when we've done that, the other, when we've given some instruction or asked for some things, like in the minutes from the last meeting, what I asked for, hasn't been done, not because of you, but because other things happened within the city people, staff telling you other things, so that concerns me.
Yeah.
I want to echo that, why is this, we're talking about these items where this is from last year budget, it should have been done when the budget is approved, right? Because we're allowed to spend the money already.
So I think some of it was started, I know the canopy was started by Chris, but remember, we've had some changes in staff?
Ah.
And we had a reorganization of the, what do you call that? Management staff? Seniors, what do you call them, Amanda?
Executive team staff.
Executive team staff, too.
Executive staff, okay, that's the reason.
I think, but I think we've made that clear, that moving forward, we want these firmer costs.
Yeah. I agree.
Would it be possible, then, for, I mean, we, just as long as we would have a quorum, to meet on March 11th at 5:00, say, here in this room? To take a look at that?
Do you have a motion?
I'd kind of like to see, is that, is that something? Because it has been on our calendar, so I'm assuming that everybody has that time blocked out.
I can do it.
I can.
Let me see, I am flying back from Tendagonia, I just need to see what time I come home.
Come on the 11th.
Yeah, 11th of March.
Yeah, we would have been doing the city council just 5:00 here.
5:00 here, sure.
Okay, I'd like to propose a motion, then, because I think it looks like we could, can have a quorum. I'd like to propose a motion that we have a special meeting at 5:00 PM on March 11th.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So that would give us a chance. It shouldn't be too long.
What time, 5:00?
5:00.
You're...
Yeah.
Do we have to say to post the agenda, and do we have to say that now, or is that understood?
It's understood.
I think it's understood.
As a special meeting, it'll be posted at least 24 hours before.
And right now, there's only one agenda item, but we haven't gotten to the budget. So, and the one agenda item would be to prepare a capital priority, sorry, to prepare the capital improvement and capital equipment requests that are going to go forward to the city council for requesting funding for 2021. So I don't expect you to get funding for the bottle watering station or those things that may not offer.
Right. Okay.
So we just need to get ready for how many items?
Well, let's, I don't...
Right, so now we misunderstand each other, how many items we need to get ready for?
I think it's, I'm looking at this as the entry canopy is underway, you're, the RFP out, and you're getting bids on the bar that AV, the public use computer replacement is kind of underway. Window tinting may be absorbed by Public Works, so we're really looking at the one big ticket item to go before city council and the security camera system as number one. Number two, you think you're writing the grant for the young adult furniture, does that also need to go on a capital list for city council?
It's a little...
I don't think so.
I don't think it would need, if you get the grant money, we would just do the typical appropriation of funds, and then accept the donation, and it would be, it would happen at any time.
Well, and, great.
What about the architectural fee for the computer room renovation?
That's what we're discussing, and I need to figure out how much that would be.
So would that be second, security number one, computer room renovation?
And the interior painting, we decided to let the Public Works absorb it, is that how?
We're asking them, or...
As a maintenance, right? As a maintenance budget.
Right.
That would probably be well presented as part of a number of items, as opposed to just separating out the interior painting. These are the items that we would like to see permanently moved to the city, including interior painting, that would be my suggestion, rather than piecemealing to them as you come across, oh, how about adding this back to, as Hal was suggesting, do your study.
So we're not recommending interior painting for our capital improvement list? The server's already done, and we're going to hold on the bottle watering, why is it called bottle watering? The news and information monitors are, didn't you put two up?
Yeah, we've got two up.
And then the projector for this room is not going to be on the list. So it's really going forward with the security cameras to the city council, is that it?
No, I think we should be more, no? I mean, some of the money this year and next year, we could talk about it, so...
But Mary, we're trying, we have to tell them now what money we'd like for that next year. Well, not now, like today, but now in this part of the budget process.
I like it all the way down to this today. It's up to you, you ask me.
Yes, you ask you.
I want it all the way here, why should I settle for less, right? Why would I ask everything I want?
Does this need to stay?
Why are we patiently for next year? All the water and all that, we just ask this year.
It should be listed as completed, then, right?
Maybe you get it, what do you think?
Which one are you talking about?
The news and information monitors.
And we have the audition. Ready to serve, right? Those are not really that expensive.
I think the bottle watering station at 5,000 is a good estimate, continues to be a good estimate. The news and information monitors, I think they could...
That should be listed as completed.
Is that correct, I mean?
That's what, yes, yeah.
That one's done, that's completed.
Yeah, that's why we have the wish list, some people saw the wish list, right?
And the Thornton conference room projector?
Yeah, this room, we're using it, why is not priority? We should own ourselves, have a very nice facility.
Well, the direction was for staff to identify their priorities, and then this was not identified on that.
Well, is it possible if you do increase the rental rate? Because the rental rate on this room is down like 30 or 50% compared year-to-date, compared with last year?
I know that they are currently doing the fee study and revise, and they're going to see if we increase the cost that we charge for rentals, I'm not sure if this would be part of that conversation.
Well, but the rental rate for this room has been down for year-to-date, here is, yeah, the social room, conference room, year-to-date, compared with that, is down 26%. Oh, that's 78%.
We can look at that under statistics, Mary. Let's...
You think the bottle watering station and the Thornton conference room projector should also go before the city council?
Why not? It's a new, why not? The worst is to be rejected, that's, and you might have put, I don't know, what do you think? I think the water station should not wait, because water is an issue with every person who visits the library, they really are an improvement to their quality of life, because a lot of times, people don't want to go out and buy bottle water, and they just don't drink, which is terrible for the food season, they really need to really have a little water extract to be immune to. So I think that we should add that in.
Let's put the bottle watering station as number two on the list? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm recommending that, it's indication of San Marino pay great attention to the public's health. Yeah, particularly right now with the coronavirus, one of the best immune systems.
Okay, let's, we've got, we've got some time constraints here, so let's try and stick just to the information that we have in front of us. I think that it's not a problem if we put all of these items on the list for city council, but, you know, worst-case scenario, they say no.
So can you recap what the items are, or Robert, can you recap what you, what the items are for the...
So what, are you talking in the plan in general, or just for next year?
What you're going to present?
So...
Excuse me, let me get the words right. The capital improvement plan presentation for March 27th, detailed discussion with council related to the CIP. Draft operational budgets have been shared with appropriate commissions or boards for feedback. So what are you going to give them that day for the library?
So if we are successful, what we're going to propose is the security camera system is one, we will bring forward the architectural review for the computer room renovation, and then we'll also... and then we'll also have the conversation moving up the bottle watering station.
I don't understand if we're successful and our conversation, who else do you have to talk to?
Michael Throne, because he helps create the capital improvement.
Well, to clarify, I mean, this can come from you as your proposal, and that's what the library board's proposal is. But like Robert said, the capital improvement budget is really a citywide budget. So, Michael then works with the city manager, and they do a reassessment of understanding our budget limitations citywide, what they're recommending to council. So, it doesn't mean like it wouldn't stay in as the board's recommendation, and it could be a disagreement, it could not be, they could agree with it, but there's just that step, I don't want to make it seem like it didn't get there like it should have, there just may be a reordering by these-
Well, I think we just want it clear-
Right, as long as you say.
-when it comes from us, what our priorities are, and then we, we understand the cities might change that. But they need to know that we say number one, this is number one, and this is number two.
Right.
Okay?
So, could you update this priority list and indicate, maybe in one of these columns or somewhere, that the security camera system is our number one? The architectural design or any costs for that, for the computer room renovation are number two? And I would go as far as to say, any costs associated with drafting a plan with final actual numbers for the computer lab renovation, so we can really shop it around. And then number three is the bottle watering station. And I think the bottle watering station was number four on the staff's list. And number two on their list was the young adult area, which is why Irene is going to write that grant. So, can you revise this and email us with any comments from Michael Throne before we meet on March 11th?
Sure.
Even like March 10th, would be okay?
Maybe he can join us on March, the meeting, can he join us?
It might be to be determined, just since, since we have a council meeting at 6:00, there may be a closed session, he's involved, it just depends, we can ask him.
Well, if he can't, I, I could see why he couldn't come on March 11th if he has to meet with the city council, because, you know, they're important.
You just never know, he might not.
But then, could he come to our regularly scheduled March meeting at 8:30?
I don't see why not, I can, one of us even follow.
Could you invite him?
If anything, he might send Dean.
Thank you, Amanda. You tell him.
He hasn't had any excuses.
Okay, are we, are we done then with capital improvement?
Yes.
We move on to public computer replacement?
Yes, so I am aggressively following Entelsys to finalize the bid specification for the computer lab replacement. Once we have that, I wrote this here. This will simply be a procurement by the code, and so it'll simply require council approval, since it's anticipated to be greater than 30 grand. And what I'm trying, the foundation, well, Cindy Chan from the foundation had conveyed to me that the foundation would like to present this during National Library Week, that falls on the week of April 19th. That Friday is a council meeting, but it's slated for the CIP presentation. So, I'm confirming if then this, if we are able to get the bids back on time, if this will have to go to the April 8th Wednesday meeting, or if this will have to be pushed to the May 13th meeting. Preferably, I want to get it for the April, May, April 8th meeting. Again, I still need to get the bid specifications back, and then from there, we can create the timeline on when we are able to get everything turned.
Okay, there is an April 8th meeting added, because on my last list, it's only April 104, I didn't see any April.
No, this is city council.
But this is just for the budget, so the April 8th meeting still exists, it's just not a budget-specific meeting, yeah.
Do I have any questions? Oh, so, the range of costs, that was also updated, because the conversation is that, right now, we have separate machines, separate towers and monitors at each station. What Entelsys has conveyed to me is that we may use thin clients, so we may just get one massive powerful server, and then smaller monitors, and so it'll be a much less expense to maintain. So, if one machine breaks, we don't have to pay for a whole new computer set. It'll just be replace that whatever that thin client is, and then just make sure that the server, the main server is well up to date. And it'll also ensure that every other station will be the same power, same specs, same programs, et cetera. Entelsys again is waiting to give me the comparisons of which would be the better option to go.
Are all of the safety features and filters protecting the public or protecting the libraries to one place in that?
Yes.
Configuration?
Right, and that's the other thing, is that if we buy separate computers, if one breaks down, we have to get the whole software back on it. If we have the thin clients, it'll be much easier to maintain. So, that conversation's where I'm at right now, so hopefully I have something to use.
Okay.
Just work with Cindy.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are there any questions on the public access computers?
No.
Nope.
Financial budget report.
All right, so you all have in your packet the budget monitor for this fiscal year, as well as the month of January. Thus far, there haven't been any-
Right. Thank you.
Outlandish changes, however, we did sign the new MOU, so there will be increases on personnel costs. And it may exceed what was budgeted, so I'm waiting to, it, those changes will most likely reflect on the February, well, the next budget monitor. And then this will also impact the planning for 2021, because all those personnel expenditures are going to go up, as well as that, the retirement benefits, et cetera, things like that.
When does that hit the budget? When do they experience the raises and so forth?
So, this, we just got paid on Friday, and that was when we got the raises.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good, it's just, so if, how do we, again, how do we absorb that for the rest of the year?
That's a great question, and that's a conversation I need to have with Josette to figure out what's going to happen. And then the, and then, yeah, it'll just impact the planning for 2021, and then finance will come back and tell us what that case looks like.
I believe it's nothing you have to worry about, I think council reappropriated funds when they passed the MOU, so it's just part of-
Oh, thank you.
It was quite a hefty amount, and we felt that was the way we needed to retain and keep our employees.
Thank you. Did you get my yoga room?
Pardon me?
Did you give them my yoga room?
Not this day.
So, then, yes. One item, however, that has become a little bit of concern is the revenue for the library. So, when I looked at the passport revenue, it's been low. And as a result of that, it, based, if we go on the current same rate as what it's been going at, we're going to be short a few thousand, tens of thousands of dollars by the end of the fiscal year. Another thing that may be impacting it is the coronavirus, people are traveling less. And as a result of this, we are adjusting our estimates for next fiscal year. So, we are exploring other options of where the library may be able to obtain revenue. One of the conversations has been, it may be that we start charging for certain programs, but the library is reluctant to, because it doesn't, that's not the mentality, but that is one of the options that we may have to explore if the passport revenue continues to drop.
I remember last week we upheld our budget because our own passport, right? So, what does that mean in, in, in what the council is going to see in the budget?
Kind of cool.
Are we going to be, be used to reduce our budget or cut our budget because of the income on passport income?
We don't know yet, and those are conversations, again, that I'm having with Irene and Josette to figure out what the next year's budget's going to look like. So, Irene and Josette and I met last week to figure out at least some preliminary expenditures for next fiscal year, and then I'm coming back, doing a little bit more of the revenue estimates, whatever information I get back from finance too, for the personnel. The other item that we are considering is an additional part-timer, because we want about a third of their time to be focused solely on communications, because what we've noticed is, from the conversations from the Blue Ribbon Committee, the Rec Commission, and the community meetings, is that the paper copy of the library guide, I'm sorry, the Community Services Guide, is not being used quite effectively as we would like it to be. If you don't have young children at home, you're pretty much just going to always toss it. And if it doesn't really capture attention, you're not going to get the information that you need. So, what we would like is to really modernize our communication methods. Hopefully, we can get our wish list from the city council. And this person would be devoted to communication about a third of their time. The other two-thirds of their time, what we are saying, what Irene also mentioned, was that they would work closely with Jeff on fines. So, what we, we're able to look back on the history, is there's a large number of uncollected overdue fines, and that needs to potentially be a source of revenue for the library. And this person hopefully would be able to be devoted to that area.
Have, have we thought about using an open for general communication, they may work great down, you know? They don't get sickly, and they don't need much to, and they, program ones, you know? Have we thought about that? I know some of the airport have used that for information, I don't know what I need to do.
I think they need, like, blasted out to the homes.
Oh, they need blasted out, I thought you meant the library, where you will get a lot of interest, everyone will come and talk to them.
That's true.
Yeah. Probably not, but the other thing that we also, that was also mentioned, is that what we've been doing is, we think that when we put it on paper and send it out to the community, the community receives it. Well, no, it's usually a lot of word of mouth, so potentially this individual could collaborate with community liaison, so people from the PTAs, people from Chinese Club, other key organizations, that can really ensure that whatever community services puts out there is heard and received well.
I actually have thought about that, in the PTA where I serve, the PTA always have a PTA chair, and they install a lot of chairs to just work on communication and work on different program, which is free. If we, our library would use having, adopting a, like, liaison system where, where it's a lot more powerful than a pay staff.
But I think that they've gotten away from that, Mary, and they actually just hired, I forget her exact title, but she is a community services information person, her name is Amber, at the school district offices, because they don't want just anybody posting on their Facebook account, or posting on their Twitter or Instagram, because who knows?
Oh, I see. Also, you might have a lot of-
So, I do think, and that just sounds fabulous, because that was one of the findings, as you said, in the Green Play recommendation, and I know that was the rec department study, but it did talk about a lot of other services in the city as well.
Right, and so those are things that we are taking into consideration, and then we are also, of course, going to be proposing new programs, activities, and however those cost, once we are able to finalize that, that will also be put into the budget for next fiscal year.
Okay.
I think that sounds great, and I think on that rec services brochure, I do read it, but I'm checking up on that, it's in there for the library.
Right.
But I'll tell you, if you could tell whoever publishes that, they should use new photographs. They're using old photos, and I know this because I know the children in those photos. I think that it would be better, oh, you know, this is new, or this is from an event that recently occurred, or an event we're trying to promote. And I think the library does a good job, like, there are really cute pictures of Tara and balloons and science stuff on the website. I think that's the kind of thing people want to see.
How about e-copy? Is that e-copies?
E-copy is also available.
Now we have it, the library, oh, I didn't know. Yeah, but it on the city website. Oh, I see, but they don't need blast for everybody, e-cop?
No, we don't, and we're exploring those options as well. So, one of the options that we are looking into is fully upgrading our recreation management software. And one of the options that we looked at is just simply upgrading our current rec tract software, or potentially, again, with the blessing of city council, if we can acquire a more expensive set of machines, well, not machines, but programs, that have the capability for text updates, or blasts, and things like that. Because right now, how it's been is we kind of piggyback off of the school district, so we'll send them information and they blast it, but we only have a small section. So, we want to make sure that whatever, again, is part-timer, can help us really expand those efforts.
Is it really, that's what I was saying, it sounds like it has to be a community.
Do you have anything else on budget?
Nope.
Okay, let's move on to city librarian's report.
Hello, everybody. The friends of the library met last week, but they didn't have a quorum, so we don't have a proof minutes. They're planning to have a picnic on the patio on March 31st at 6:00 in the evening.
March 31st?
3/1, March 3/1. And there will be musicians from the junior high school, and also a talk by Dr. Tom Mason.
Oh.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so just, just a little talk, one talk.
And when was that, March 31st?
31st.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
See you there.
Yes, and there's a charge, $20 to pay for the food.
Providing food?
Yeah.
Oh, that's even better.
Yeah.
I don't have to make my picnic.
Yeah. Just get there. Moving on to the foundations, you have their minutes, and as Hal was saying, they are thinking about having a boutique, a holiday boutique in November or December, they haven't gotten very far in their planning yet, but it's there. Moving on to operations, we still have not found a librarian one part-time. I'm going to do a push, try to get it out to the library schools, and et cetera. We have news from Rebecca Russell, she is expecting a child. She's pregnant, yeah, so she's due in August. And I also just got a call from her, she's out with a terrible cold, and so is Tara. That cold is going around, not good. So, that's the staffing situation. We can look at the statistics on page 16. And once again, we see the disappointing news that print circulation is down altogether 5% for all those segments. Looking farther down, we see that-
Isn't that something that we expect?
Yeah, at this point, yeah, at this point. And we can see that the ebook downloads have gone up 14%.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's where that's going. Somebody accidentally used the Encyclopedia Britannica online, so we, that's 192% of jump. The Gale databases are up slightly, but it reads as 350%. So, even just a little bit of use on these databases is very, very apparent. Moving on to page 17. We do not have a statistic for computer logins, because we didn't get it in time, but I'll, it'll be on the next one. Library cards are about the same, and then we have processed materials. Are there any questions on the statistics? News, all right, moving on. Programming and services, a report on the library and recreation training. On February 14th, which was a Friday, we closed in the morning to have a joint session with recreation, where we brainstormed ideas for programs that we could do together. And among those programs was a walk, a story walk, in which there'll be a story on 14 boards in the Lacy Park, where kids can go along and read the story as they walk. That was Rebecca's idea.
Great.
Yeah.
Beautiful.
Another idea was to have ESL classes for Chinese speakers, that kind of thing. Because we, as a library, do not charge for programs, and Recreation Department does, the solution we came up with is that we would have a free introductory class at the library. And if you wanted to continue, you could pay for a class at rec. So, that way, we'd use both of our models for that.
And we can call that with Chinese club, they love that.
Oh, yeah, they, they already do, you know, put on programs every month here in the library, we're grateful to them for that. Finally, technology and marketing, RFID is complete.
Yeah.
Eighteen months, but it's done, and we have self-checkout, and people love it. So, once again, thanks to the foundation and to the friends for bringing that.
And thank, thank you to our trustee Eldon here, who would help so much with that, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Nice to have somebody who knows what's going on in the group.
Yes. And that completes my RFID report.
All right, is there any additional business? I would like to have a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for a very productive meeting.
Yes.
I've checked out things here and used the RFID.
Yeah.
Uh, I have a new-
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 Yeah.